We will. You please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I roll call, please, Sadie?
Counselor Hughes.
Here.
Counselor McElroy.
Here.
Counselor Metcalf.
Here.
Counselor Prokop.
Here.
Counselor Strobel.
Here.
Counselor Ten Bush.
Here.
Mayor Drinkman.
Here, thank you very much for that. I have two comments from online. I will read here. The first one is, Chantel Higgy.
I don't see her online yet, just Scott so far.
So we'll bring her on the second time around. And the other one is Scott Clayton. Scott, are you there?
Yeah, can you hear me?
I sure can. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Scott Clayton with Cedar Ridge Homes. Thank you guys for taking time tonight. I'm calling in to request that you guys or staff look into a change to the front yard setback in the R1 zone. Currently, the R1 zone has a minimum front yard setback of 20 feet to any part of the structure, including a front porch. And I'd like to request that we look at reducing that to 15 feet to the porch or structure, but maintain the 20 to the garage or parking carport area. This would be in line with the setbacks in the R2 and the NCR zone. What we've run up against on several occasions is we're modifying a plan where we're either reducing or eliminating a front porch or scooting the house back and sacrificing, you know, rear yard living space. And it's just, I think it's it'd be a good change to allow the front porch to be able to stick in to the front yard up to five feet. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Scott. Are there any questions for Scott before we?
This is on a 7,500 square foot lot, Scott?
Yeah, the other zones already allow it, but the 7,500s do not.
Are you dealing with like a heavily sloped lot or something like that?
Where we usually run into it is like an upsloping or downsloping lot where we're trying to keep the house up, you know, on the flatter part. And we end up having to push it back or usually what happens is we eliminate the front porch, which, you know, I think is an important feature of the house. And it, it's not that often that it comes in, but several times recently we've had to modify stuff to make it work. And it just seems like, you know, a pretty easy change that would work for everybody.
It would always be a non-enclosed part of the structure.
Yeah.
Only portion of the structure.
The others, I think the other zones allow even dwelling, but for us, the front porch is the big thing.
Gotcha.
It also applies to stairs. So like if you have an upsloping lot and you have a set of structural stairs coming out, you know, that, that, the way the code is, that's interpreted that that's part of the structure, those front stairs. So it pushes the house back even further up the slope, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
Jerry, did you have a question?
Guess my question would be for Alan. Is this something that that could be an exception, you know, in a, you know, when they're submitting their plans, is this something that could be an exception, not necessarily the rule, but you know, an exception that we, that could be done?
They'd have to apply for a variance, which is a kind of a involved process, a land use process that it is a, yeah, goes planning commission.
So I'm just saying, if this isn't something that happens very often, I don't, I wouldn't want to make it the rule. If we could put something into where, you know, it, it could be allowed in certain circumstances, you know, rather than making it the rule. Cause I don't want to see, I don't want to see everybody just putting 15 foot, you know, 15, you know, 15 foot offset or whatever. I'd like to see it, you know, in, in certain circumstances where it's necessary, put an exception in.
If this is something the counselors are interested in, it would probably be a good idea for us to add that to an agenda item later. And, and we could bring back options or possibilities after we have a time to, to take a look at it, consider it.
And council feels comfortable with this?
Yeah.
Okay.
Your ex staff.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, great. Thank you, Scott, for that comment tonight, and we will look into this. And I'm sure you'll hear it pretty soon here.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Okay. One more. All right. Aaron Lamb. Would you come up to the microphone, please? State your name and address and.
Hello, my name is Aaron Lamb. I have a business at 3045 Northwest Campus Drive in the industrial park. The reason that I came to the council meeting today to address you is to hopefully open the conversation on reversing the ban on marijuana retail in the industrial park. So mainly, all other manufacturing businesses are currently able to use up to 15% of their space for retail purposes to sell and display their products that they manufacture. I currently have a manufacturing business for cannabis manufacturing at that address. And I'm looking to add a retail location there as well. My plan adheres to the comprehensive plan for the city of Estacada and limits the extra open space that would need to be developed. Currently, the building already has, you know, sidewalks, ADA accessible, ADA parking, water, power. It was previously already licensed as a cannabis wholesale facility. So transferring over to a retail would not be much effort at all as far as the OLCC is concerned. My main concern about the, the area that is currently zoned for cannabis retail is that you would have to build a new building, draw in new utilities, power, water, sewer, all of these things to do that. In doing so, it would again harm all of the open space that you see coming into town. And the first thing that you would see as you pull into town would be a marijuana retail shop. And I'm not sure that that would necessarily be the best look if that's, you know, that's where the, it's currently being zoned for. Troutdale is a good example of a city where if you put it in the industrial park, it works for both the city and the business. Troutdale only has one marijuana retail location and it's called Tetra. It is located in the industrial park. It's been there for years now, doesn't cause any, you know, excess break-ins or anything like that to the industrial businesses around it. But it does keep the smell and anything like that away from the downtown area. I know that there are concerns with added smell or anything like that, that would, marijuana retail might bring. But the fact that I already have a marijuana processing facility there would negate really any extra smell that would be coming from something like that. We're already processing, you know, thousands of pounds a month and a little bit of cannabis onsite to be sold is a very small portion of that. I appreciate your time today and want to thank you so much for hearing me out.
Thank you.
All right. Any questions for, before we? Okay.
Thank you.
All right, do we have Chantel? Is she on there yet? Okay, I'll wait till the next time around then. All right, that's all that I have in front of me and there's no more online. Okay, great. Next on the list, I have the consent agenda. You've all had a chance to read it over. Are there any questions? Anything you'd like to move into council business? No? So can I have a motion on the floor, please?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, have a first, can I have a second?
Second.
First and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Department and committee reports. Jerry, you have anything from your committees?
I was sick and I missed both of my meetings this last week. And I missed the Christmas tree lighting, so I don't have anything to report. All right, I heard it was wonderful.
It was, it was great. They did a great job. Anything from you?
No, I was out of town this last week, month.
Mike?
We are having a meeting. It's December 12th. Help me with the time. Is it 5:30? The Economic Development Committee is getting together with business leaders from the community. Just wanted to get the word out there. If you own a business in Estacada, if you want to come down and share your thoughts and give some feedback to us and just participate with the Economic Development Committee. That's going to be working closely with business owners in the community and trying to attract new businesses to come in. Come on down. And I believe it's 5:30.
5:30 to 7:30.
5:30 to 7:30 on December 12th.
So that's this coming Thursday.
Yep.
Right here.
Yep.
Paul. Met with a library group and the, if you made it to the Christmas tree lighting, you saw the, the bookmobile there too. And just want to touch base on that. They are doing so much that bookmobile is in terms of outreach in the community locally. The, the biggie that they're doing up to Ripplebrook as well too. And it is becoming more and more used by folks in the community. Roxanne, the outreach librarian is just a student of what she's doing there. Taking the time to get to know the people, getting to know the places as well too, and how to cater that bookmobile to help our community here. She's doing just a ton of outreach, helping folks that are stuck at home as well too. And I just want to just recognize her and Michelle's group over there, the great work they're doing. Somebody said at the meeting that that bookmobile is becoming an asset, a valuable asset to the community. And I would think so too. They're just doing a great job.
Well, good. Thank you. That's good to hear. They were out of the tree lighting and they were very, very busy. So it was good to see. It's good to see.
School board meets this Wednesday, so I have nothing specific on that. But I would encourage anybody who is paying attention to what's going on in the school district to hop online. They have a lot of information via Facebook and their own website. There's a lot of community discussion going on as they're trying to accommodate the tremendous growth in our community. They're trying to strategize and game plan how they're going to accommodate this, this big influx of students into our community. Since the bond didn't pass, they're just really trying to strategize how they're going to meet the 2025 school year. So if anybody's interested in that, please, I encourage you to go onto Facebook. Superintendent Carpenter has a lot of information on there. There's a lot of Facebook lives that he does. And he answers a lot of community questions. And if those of you want to get involved or have concerns about that, please contact a school district. Maggie Kelly is a really good resource for that. And I, I'm so sorry, I missed the tree lighting. I really wanted to go, but I was at the Lady Rangers wrestling tournament. I wish I could be in two places at once, but the tree looks beautiful. So, yeah. That's all I got.
Thank you for that. Now we have the city manager's report.
All right. We have got a slideshow for you and we'll start out tonight with a city attorney report. So a few things to, they have to talk about.
We've, we've had a couple of things come up on the Walker franchise. So we had been told that they were pursuing that a deal was being pursued between Arrow and Walker, which is good news for as far as we were concerned. That I, I got a call from Walker's attorney on Friday, basically saying that there was an asset sale potentially happening, but that we would need to extend the franchise for five years. Which was not what we were expecting. So the, there's some language in there that there was a potential to, in 2023 or after, to look at the franchise and to add five years to it, which would take the term from, basically from five years to 10 years. We didn't, that's not something we looked at last summer because everything was or a year and a half ago, because everything was in, in flux at that point. So there's some potential complications if an asset sale doesn't happen. And one of them is the ability to get containers. And so I am just, can, because there's lead time associated with all these things. So I am pretty concerned about it from just a kind of a life, health, safety perspective. We need, people need to know that their garbage is going to get picked up. You know, after the holidays with all that stuff, I mean, I can't think of kind of a worse time for people not to be getting garbage service potentially. You know, my recommendation was, is that we make some additional phone calls. And I've been in touch with Josh from Arrow, who's always, we've always had like a great working relationship. He's not the one that would be involved in the purchase or any of that. I mean, that's corporate. That's so we're, I mean, I feel like we're at a point where you kind of need to figure out where our options are because I just, and there's a little bit of flexibility to have someone else do the pickup for a limited duration. We had provided our notice of, you know, the default. We haven't received any materials that we request, received a request for a hearing, but not, none of the materials that would be responsive to the items on our letter. So I guess we're going to try and find a date to schedule the hearing before that January 1 anticipated turnover. And then the other thing is probably need to make some phone calls and just see who's out there that potentially could provide service in an interim period. And my goal is, obviously you're the decision makers. One decision could be to extend the franchise five years. You know, prior to January 1, that, that is an option. I just want to know what all of our options are so that you guys can make an informed choice. And also that we're demonstrating the community that we're, you know, we're trying to figure out what our options are on a very expedited basis. So, but we're, and now's not a great time of the year to be trying to do this, but we're going to do everything we can to figure out what our options might be. And then we're working with Josh to see if, if they don't buy the containers, if, if Arrow could start service on January 1. And so this is, you know, we, we need some instruction from you, just if you want us to proceed with looking at other options. And then well, I think staff will reach out to see if what, what a, what a hearing, what hearing day could potentially work.
Okay, let me ask council quick and their directive here. How does council feel about that? Do you feel that Peter's directive is, is always one to follow? And are you on board with this or?
Go ahead. Just want to make sure I understand what you're saying. They're, they're planning on selling possibly to Arrow. And contingent on the sale, obviously, the longer the franchise term, the more valuable the asset is for them to purchase. And it makes more sense for a company like Arrow to purchase it if there's more length on the franchise agreement. Because currently it's expiring in four years. Four years. Oh, so they want to, so it's only four years left and then additional five months. So let's take it from four to nine? I just want to make sure I'm understanding what you're saying.
So what he said was that the sale was contingent, and my understanding is an asset sale. So that the, the sale was contingent on a five-year extension of the term. So it would go from four to nine.
With, with the change of ownership, or they're saying that the, the same ownership that isn't providing all the responses to the letter?
The, in order for Arrow and, and, and we have Josh here, so maybe he can address this. But in order for Arrow to proceed with the asset purchase, they want five years added to the franchise.
To Arrow's franchise or to?
Well, so that's, so there, there are a lot of complications because Arrow has, Arrow's, Arrow's franchise isn't in default. Right? I mean, there, and there was language that in 2023, we could extend. It specifically, the language is a bit ambiguous. My recollection is that I write the language, but my recollection of what the city was looking to do was an off-ramp. So in 2018, there were some issues. They were concerned there might be issues in the future. We had the regular termination clause, but then there was also this kind of look at it. And we didn't because, you know, Judy had just passed and, and we were trying to get this stuff figured out ourselves. So you know, I, I originally was like, could this extension be a separate? Could we make sure that, that people are going to get their service and could this happen? And then we'll schedule a agenda item at some point in the future to talk about whether we want to do an extension outside of the ordinary term. But you know, that, and again, I, I've had phone calls with the lawyer for Walker. I have not. Josh and I have exchanged emails, but we haven't been able to have a phone call yet on this topic since I heard from Walkers. And I, he got an email from me at six o'clock on a Friday night. Cause this came in late, so.
Arrow has a five-year franchise.
They have four years left. Walker has four years left.
The five years being added to which one?
Walker.
Walker. Which then would be
Well, so that, these are
Would then be Arrow. Part of a purchase from, of Arrow purchasing that.
Right. So then we would have potentially four years on one and nine years on the other. And so if we're looking at, you know, it's, it's not great to not have mirror, or I guess we could use the same, we could use the same reasoning to review arrows as well, and then they could be synced again. It's just we're, we're running out of time and this is an unanticipated wrinkle. So I wanted to get this in front of you guys as soon as possible. Because again, like, I can't think of a worse time to have like garbage service endowed and recycling service. So all the boxes and everything else that people are going to have.
In the asset sale, you're talking about specifically the garbage containers?
That would be
So like, they won't sell the containers unless the, Arrow won't purchase the containers unless the franchise is extended.
I, I don't know. I know that what they said was asset purchase. I don't know any of the terms of the deal. And, and I assume that the assets are the, the garbage truck and the containers.
Gotcha. Understood.
Jerry, so it sounds to me like the, the, given the five-year extension is going to put the city in the best position to, to not lose service. Given the five-year extension, you know, with five-year extension with them selling, you know, with the idea of them selling is going to put the city in the best position to not lose service. We're not going to have to spend a bunch of hours trying to find somebody else that can come in and in, internally, you know, provide service. We can just, Arrow can provide service starting January 1 if with this five, five-year extension. I think that's the best.
Okay, so we, we would need to, we need to schedule a meeting to have that conversation. I just, in the interim, I wanted all of you to be aware of this. And if you want us to look at other, what other options might be available, we don't have much time, so.
Just for, since we're here on it and Josh is here, can we just see if he can clarify any of Mike's questions?
Yeah, we could.
That way we have all the information. We can expedite this.
Sure.
Josh, thanks for coming tonight.
Yeah.
Good evening, everyone. Good to see you all again. So yeah, a couple of, couple of things for clarity. I guess first and foremost, I think everything that Peter said was accurate as far as the asset sale is concerned. And I wanted to start with saying that, you know, we've been in touch with Mark and Kim quite often, and they are supportive of this kind of agreement going forward, I think. To Counselor Tenon Bush's comments that this is probably the best solution for the community. One thing we've had in mind all along is to make sure that Mark and his family kind of, you know, to the best of their ability, retain that legacy that Judy had. As well as, you know, a win for the community where the trash service isn't in jeopardy, right? So that's been our goal all along as well. And I think we've, we've been aligned on that. So, you know, we did bring up and ask for that extension component simply because of the amount of time left on the existing franchise, right? Our franchises are aligned as far as timing goes. To invest that money, we just were looking for a little bit longer of a, of a term to amortize that purchase and that acquisition of their, their assets. We can go live January 1. It's going to be challenging because it is a, a short turnaround, but we are prepared to do that if that's the direction of the council and, and all parties agree. And so and I, I want to say thank you to, you know, to Melanie and Peter, as well as the Walker family. There's been a lot of conversations and, and a lot of back and forth. And I think we've, I feel like we've come to a, a good solution for the community, so.
So when you say that, are you guys going to leave the name Walker? When you're talking about leaving legacy, are you going to remain under Walker? Or are you going to change everything to Arrow? What's the plan there?
Yeah, we would change everything to Arrow if, if the franchise is assigned to us. If it were a, a stock deal where we purchased the entire corporate, their entire company, we would consider keeping the name. But in this case, we would change it to Arrow.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
So is the sale conditional with the five years? So if you didn't get the five years, you wouldn't purchase the, the company? Is that what I'm hearing here?
Well, I think that's certainly our preference. I don't want to say we wouldn't, but it, it's a, you know, it's something that we have to look at. And this is not uncommon. We would ask this in many of our other cities and jurisdictions that we operate in if we were investing with a limited timeframe left on the franchise. So I, Mr. Mayor, I don't want to say we wouldn't, but certainly we, you know, we would like to request that extension and, and continue to work with the city in the, the strong relationship that we've had for, for many years out here, so.
Any other questions? No, everybody's comfortable with that. So what would council like to do from this point? Would you like to have staff go out and put this together for a meeting to get this started? Or would you like to go away from the five-year extension and look at another option?
I'd, I'd like to move forward with this.
I'd like to look, look at it. Is there any benefit to having the franchises come out at the same time? Because if, if the five-year extension, if there's any benefit to having them expire on the same date, maybe look at extending both of them.
If someone, if someone were to, and, and I haven't seen a lot of competition for, for waste. You know, I haven't, in jurisdictions I've represented, I haven't seen, you know, a lot of open competition. But if they were having, having a citywide on the term would be more attractive. The whole thing on one would be more attractive because again, you're the deploying trucks out to the community and then to, to dump and all that. Anytime you could have a whole community versus half, I think it would be more attractive.
More competitive?
Yeah.
Would, do you think, would, is the length of time, whether you had one that was for four and one that was for nine, or you had two that were for seven and a half? If they both got extended out so that they had the same deadline, so there's a benefit to the city in the extension? But you got the extra months in the franchise agreements, but it was distributed against both evenly? Would there be a benefit to that so that it's not staggered?
Yeah, and I, and I appreciate this question and conversation because what we, I guess, as a company, look at this as it would be all one franchise, right? And not have two separate ones going forward. If Walkers divest their assets and the franchise is assigned to us as a company, we would look at that as one franchise. So to your point, right, have one date versus two separate, separate dates, but.
And, and the date would be okay at six and a half years instead of nine years and four, going six and a half on both?
Yeah, and I think to Peter's point earlier on the language, that's where we, you know, typically at that five-year mark, which is what's in the franchise agreement, that there's an ability to extend. We, I think intentionally didn't have those conversations because of the situation that Walker was in. Normally, we would be asking the council for that five-year extension, so. And I think Peter said it well, the, the language is a little unique and different than some franchise agreements. But does allow us that ability to try to extend an additional five years. So that's our, that's our preference, so.
Okay, Melanie?
My thought, and I do defer to Peter for, you know, advising us in this situation. But to, it seems like the Walker franchise would be coming to an end. And that we would just have the franchise with Arrow and would expand their map. Cause right now we have a map that designates which parts of the city Walker covers and which part Arrow covers. And if we adopted a new map where Arrow covers the whole city, then we could just have one franchise agreement with them. And that's the one that would be extended potentially if the, if the council wanted to extend that, but I, I.
Right, so I, I mean, let's say this issue hadn't come up. Let's say they just said, hey, we're going to buy the assets. Let's say they just said, hey, we're gonna buy the assets and we said, wonderful, you know, all along councils really wanted to make sure that, you know, Mark didn't walk away with, you know, nothing. I would have just amended the map. So, I mean, that's how I would have done it. Really, what we have now is we have almost like, it's more than a parallel path, it's almost three paths. So there's a question of who could, who can provide service on January one? How would, I mean practically speaking, let's say Walker wasn't selling the assets, let's say they were retaining them. Would they even be picking up the containers and we would be, be able to get containers down? You know, would a company like Waste Management that has a county contract, would, would they come in and and do an asset purchase? I don't know whether they would or not. Would they have enough containers to, to do the service? I don't know whether they, I don't know who would, I mean, there's different players. Right now, we are on a incredibly tight timeline with way more unknowns than I'm, I'm comfortable with. And again, this happened on Friday. So um, so I was in my office late on Friday, uh trying to like vet, trying to look through these issues. Reading the franchise agreement again, I mean, doing all that and I know we need at least another meeting this month because of this issue. And I guess one of my thoughts was, okay, what's the scope of that meeting? Do we wanna get more information so that we can make it informed us, so that you guys are better able to make a decision before that? And we can talk through some of these issues, um knowing that, you know, um. Yes. I I would have really appreciated knowing this like four, four weeks ago or something. But yeah, so uh their options would be, we, if we have a hearing, um cause our franchise language, if if they're in default, we can just assign, we can assign it. It it doesn't say who, I mean, it's pretty wide open as far as who it could be assigned to. So that's what I thought we were doing. Um this extension requires another hearing. Prior to that hearing, you guys might benefit from knowing if there are any other options or, or, cause we're, we're in a position where, and again, I don't blame Josh for any of this, but I feel like we're pretty leveraged here. It's the holidays. There's how much wrapping paper is gonna be, how many boxes, all of that. We need to know, people need to know that this is gonna get picked up. And um this is curveball that we weren't anticipating. It 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 might be that we've got it, we really have no choice but to do the um extension at this time. Or risk not having service, but I I feel like we need, every, everyone might benefit from having a little more information.
And and I would have to agree with Peter on this one, I, I think we're kind of backed in a corner here on a decision. And I've signed lots of franchise over the years. And you wanna make sure you've got all the information upfront on a franchise agreement. And this is a big one. So when we look at the future of the trash in this, this city, and we've had, you know, several different episodes as it's moved along. I would like to make sure that we've got everything ironed out before we agree on this. And I feel like I'm short on information here. And I, I think we should probably listen to Peter's uh recommendation of actually sitting down and talking this out and finding out, you know, all the ins and outs before we sit there and agree to this franchise. And that's up to you whether we do that or not, but that's just my preference as the mayor, I think we gotta be really careful going forward. So Jonathan, you have something?
I have no problem being careful going forward, I agree with you on extra eyes and it doesn't ever hurt to take a second look, but, and I definitely don't, almost got this feeling of like being strong armed, kinda like, oh, we can take this all the way, but for pause and effect, right? However, what I will say, Josh, is you guys have been good to our community.
Yeah.
Your drivers wave at everybody that drives by them, they're appropriate. You know, they're polite and courteous to the people in the streets with their vehicles and their things like that. You've been very, very transparent and helping to our local company and through this process, so. And you're working, quite frankly. And as stressful as it would be, you're ready to go on the first, which I think is, speaks volumes too for as big of a thing as we're talking. What I would like to know also though is, is there have been any conversation on the cost? Cause I would like to see the change or the benefit to the community on this as well, now that there's gonna be more accounts.
Yeah, that's, that's a very good thing to ask.
Um anybody else?
I'm on board with having the hearing, are we gonna be able to get it in this month in time to be able to, for it to still happen and take over service on the first?
We'd have a regular meeting on the twenty third, which we usually cancel. Uh but we could have a one agenda item meeting. Uh we could do it next week, I know we're planning to get together for end of the year dinner. We could do a meeting instead if we wanna do it next week, or we could just do like one item on the twenty third, we could do it via Zoom or.
Yeah, we need.
How many, how many weeks do you have to notice? I mean, I don't know, cause this is.
I think that, I think we have emergency circumstances.
Just, just to clarify, Peter, was there, it was gonna stay, it was gonna be combined into one franchise agreement? And then they were asking for the five year extension? Or they were asking for it on the Walker portion, but the Arrow was staying? Just wanna clarify that.
The, they, again, I got a call from Walker's attorney on Friday. He said that the requirement will be that five years on the franchise. I said, that was a deal term. I said, well, I can't. I can't agree, I mean, that's a council decision of my.
On the Walker, though.
On the Walker.
And then the, the Arrow was gonna stay at four years left on their franchise agreement.
Well, I, I think that he didn't ask for it on the other, um so I don't.
Do you know, Josh?
Yeah, we, you know, and I, and I think there's some, probably some clarity that could be had in conversations with our team as well as, as walkers. But our, our understanding was it was all gonna be one franchise and not separate, two separate agreements.
Five year extension on both, what would be combined into one agreement?
That's, that was our understanding, but again, don't wanna speak for Peter on that.
Hey Jerry, you got something? What would the likelihood be to get a recycling, a big recycling container put, put in town um last week of the year, you know?
Or uh just for drop off and?
Yeah, just recycling for Christmas wrapping, cardboard, um just a big recycling container dropped somewhere in town that we, you know, we could figure out a place. You know, just, just because we know that there's going to be extra waste because of Christmas.
Yeah, we'd be happy to do that.
Would that be something that would be? I'm, I'm looking for, I'm looking at the least amount of interruption for the community, that's what I'm, that's what I'm looking at. I don't wanna see, you know, um the next person not be able to start right away and people have problems with, you know, with their trash service. And adding the amount of garbage that comes with Christmas, um I don't know about you guys, but it's a lot in our, in our household. So if there was a recycling box dropped in town and people notified that they can bring all their Christmas wrapping and cardboard to that recycling box, that might, that might help
Yeah.
in the meantime.
Ideally, we'll continue with the curbside pickup, but that, I think that's a good solution if something happens where we do have a glitch. But, and as far as the cost, that's something that we would, as we come into the spring, we typically start working on the, the um rate review for summertime where we have a rate change in July if need be. And that's, I think, where we would discuss the um, the change of the rates would be on that same rotation. If there was, was to be a change in rates, which we would negotiate for. Um but we could, would you want to meet on the twenty third for one item? We could do it on Zoom even, uh so you don't have to come down maybe, or if you wanna come down, we're, you know, we'll be here.
I'm, I'm game for actually coming into the council chambers and doing it on the twenty third.
So everybody is still being in town on the twenty third?
Yeah, yeah.
All right, would you wanna do it at six o'clock or would you wanna?
Earlier.
Uh are you off, Jerry?
I'm, yeah, I'm, I'm free all day, so, so we could do it earlier.
What do you, what do you think? You guys tell me, I'm up for anything. Didn't know your plans that evening.
She's got that look.
I know, we thought this is like Counselor Hughes and Counselor.
And Paul and Peter, does this need to be a discussion for later?
I mean, I, I just, I think we would all benefit from having some clarity. If, if there are any other options, then you guys should know what they are and, and uh you know, we're gonna all try and do what's best for the community, I'm sure.
Josh, is that, I mean, does, will that work? If, would that give you guys enough time if we make our decision on the twenty third?
Or do you need it bumped back a week?
No, I mean, I think we've, we've sort of anticipated this, just given the holidays and a, and a tough month to do it in, so um we're prepared to do it. Certainly, I think uh holidays are tough to get everyone's schedules in, in line and complete the transaction with the Walker family. But certainly, uh we will, we will make it work if, if there's approval on that. And I just wanted to real quickly, one comment if you don't mind. On the cost, Counselor Metcalf, that is one of the, part of one of the reasons why we look at that extension is to keep that cost down. And to Melanie's point, if we um come back in July, invest in this, you know, our returns will probably be less. If we can look at amortizing those out over a longer period of time, we can help the community keep those rates down a little bit more stable. Um and also look at the entire book of business as we kinda mentioned before when we talked about the yard debris, so. Um and certainly did not, you know, have any intent to make the council feel um in an awkward position or, or backed in a corner, I think was the comment. This is a, you know, a business decision and a, a request of ours as a business and certainly understand either way, but wanted to make that clear that this wasn't our intent by any means, so I appreciate the conversation.
So, all right.
Is, is it possible to, um, you know, we're, we're talking holidays and squeezing things in, but aside from holidays, it's also year end uh processing for folks too. So it's, 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 it's a complicated time to get stuff done, uh you know, not just from a counselor standpoint, but from a city standpoint, Peter's standpoint too. Is it, would it be worth considering, um I don't know what you would call it, a goodwill agreement that we would address this first thing in January? Um which would give more time to look at things, um just knowing that that would be on the agenda for the first meeting in January.
Well, I, I don't think they'd be here in January and then we'd have, we don't do swearing at the door.
Be January thir- thirteenth, I think is the earliest.
So I think that's why we're looking to get it into this timeframe, cause you guys will still be.
I think we have two things here, if, if the council is potentially agreeable to looking at a time extension on the franchise, we should schedule a meeting for this month. If you're, if you're really hesitant about that, then maybe we, Peter and I just need to get more information, find out if there are any other options. But that, that's, it's a, in my mind, that's risky. Um I don't know that there are other options and I, I don't know that, I mean, I don't think they'd be possibly any better. I mean, I, Arrow's did a fantastic job, they, they do a quality job and they've been in Estacada for decades and, or in the Estacada area. They've been in town since we started annexing, our people started annexing, um. So if it's, if the council thinks they're potentially willing to do that, we just shouldn't, we haven't, we don't have this on an agenda item tonight. Um and so we shouldn't make a final decision, but if you think you might be willing to consider it, we should do one, a, a meeting on the twenty third and then.
I think, I mean, we're gonna need a meeting regardless because we're gonna have to figure out how this.
True, true.
Yeah, I'm with Peter here, let's just, let's just do the twenty third, look at our options, figure this out and then we'll go from there.
Okay, all right, sounds great, six o'clock on the twenty third and this will be the one agenda item.
Paul?
Five o'clock?
Can we do five? Is everybody okay with five?
I'm good.
Okay, five o'clock on the twenty third.
Okay.
All right. Thank you for that, and any other questions for Josh?
No, thanks, sir.
And thank you to Mark for being here also, I don't know if he, if you had any questions.
Yeah, I'd just like to have him up there for a few minutes, I'd like to ask him a few questions while we've got this on the table here, Mark. I've known you for a long time, how do you feel about this whole situation?
Well, we've kinda came to agreement with, with Arrow to do this, so we had to act, you know, you guys have to approve of it, so it's pretty much the only option I have, so.
All right, my question for you is, uh how are your workers taking this?
Um we've, we've told them, they're, they're gonna, uh at least one of them is gonna apply for Arrow. And I don't know about the other one. He just started for us not too long ago, so.
All right.
We had lost our other driver, so.
Okay, I appreciate that, Mark, anybody else, any more questions for Mark?
Uh I just wanna say thank you for everything that you've got, that you, your family has provided the city over the decades. My grandmother was, was friends with Judy uh at one point decades ago, Barbara Ten Bush. And I just wanna, wanna thank you for the service that you provided for the city.
Thank you. Yeah, we've been here for, I think, since seventy three.
Yeah, been here a while.
So I started driving the truck in eighty one, so I've been there for a while too.
Thank you, all right, thank you, yeah, Kim, go ahead, step up.
First, I wanna say thank you for taking the time on a non-consent agenda item. I wanted to, you to know, first of all, uh I wanna apologize for not being able to pull this out like I was hoping we could. But I want you to know that in all the years I've known Judy, in the years I worked for her and knowing this time would come eventually. She asked two things. One, to help Mark save this when this time came, if anybody came to try to take it from him. Because Danny started this company seventy years ago. And Mark has worked for the company since long before nineteen eighty one, when he became the driver for this company in this city. I've known Mark since nineteen seventy three when he moved here to this town. But I didn't meet Judy until twenty fourteen when Mark and I got back together again. The other thing that she said to me, she says, Mark was given the choice to continue this company, sell this company or close this company. Whatever he chose to do with the assets in the company that his father started and gave to him before he passed. And she said if he was ever to sell the company, there was one company that she wanted us to consider and that was Waste Connections. Because historically, she's worked with Josh and Jason and a lot of you. I mean, we take a lot of pride in this company and in this name. But this sale will allow Mark and I to retire to some degree, but also to to fully live our life and not be burdened by trying to rectify something that is greatly damaged. And so it's my hope and prayer. And we are not trying to strong arm the city in any way, shape or form. Their language is ambiguous at best, but also very clear in the contract. I was with Melanie and Josh and Judy, Denise and Mil- and the mayor and several of you in this negotiation for that contract. And Judy was sick then and getting sicker. And so this is the right thing for our company, for Mark, for Waste Connections, for the city, but also for the citizens of this town. It is the next move that this, this is not a town anymore, we are now a city. And we are becoming a bigger city exponentially. And the needs are bigger and greater and Waste Connections can provide that to you. We are brokenhearted, yes, and our crew is very sad. They have been the face of this company for a long time and everybody loves them. We'd love to, nothing more than for them to continue to work in your city as your, as your haulers, because they're great people. But I ask, uh one, just one thing is for you to consider the extension of the contract and putting it into one terms so that this can, this can go forward. We are gonna continue to provide the service that we have been doing. so that this can, this can go forward. We are gonna continue to provide the service that we have been doing for fifty years in this town through the end of this month. If we need to do it in the month of January, that's fine too. And as for documentation for the cure period and the hearing that we've requested, because we needed some clarification, because we couldn't meet the terms of the thirty day cure fully. And we have gotten some things done and I do have documentation and franchise fees to, to pay. And we are working on all of those. So those are all continuing to happen. Billing is finally going out. So anyway, thank you guys. I know you're going to move on. But anyway, I just wanted to thank you guys and let you know that, you know, we appreciate you guys.
Alright, so thank you. Anything left to say? Mike, go ahead.
Not to come on that, just specific question about moving forward. When you guys are looking into it for the next meeting, just make sure that we have clear understanding of how the AR for Walker disposal for the billing that's passed. What I, I want to make sure that Arrow's not taking it over and then for people that haven't been getting a bill for the last year, that Arrow's sending out a bill for back due payments, trying to get that money back. For people that just haven't been receiving a bill and that's why it's not paid. So just clear language of how far back they're going on the billing to try to recover funds from customers that didn't receive a bill.
They can only go back sixty days.
Sixty days.
So anything that wasn't billed prior to two months ago can't be billed.
Okay. Yep, alright, thank you.
Alright, Melanie, I'll let you continue.
Okay, actually, next slide, please. And this again is Peter's.
Alright, so um.
More fun.
We got our PSU population estimate. They reduced our population estimate by five percent. What this does, um, practically speaking, is it reduces the amount of shared state revenue that we get. Um, we strongly disagree with their uh, data and analysis. I, they reduced Oregon's population by fifty thousand. That's in line with the US Census estimate for the state of Oregon. Um, in doing so, they only released Portland State's population by ten thousand. And um, on a percentage basis, ours is like three times the reduction of Portland's. So as you saw from my first email, um, I pointed out that Portland State's enrollment was down five thousand, that um Concordia, which had five thousand students, was no longer a school. Um, and that, that the other universities in the city of Portland were down by around eighteen percent. Reed and Livingston Clark were a little bit different. Portland Public Schools uh, enrollment is down about twenty percent since nineteen. So that's significantly more than ten thousand people. On the other hand, our population is up. Our school enrollment is up. Um, looking at our household sizes, they, they had our household size reduced as compared to the census number. Uh, at least anecdotally, all, a lot of the people that are moving here are families, which is completely consistent with the Portland Public Schools numbers too, is that families are leaving Portland. They're coming to places like Estacada. And so the household size should be increasing, not decreasing. Uh, we, so we then did a, another follow-up because in, in their response, they use Clackamas County. Now, overall, the demographics around the county are, can be dramatically different from community to community. Um, we're gathering even more data um, that we're going to, to get to them. Um, Melanie got called on Friday. They didn't call me. They called her and, and she was told she wasn't allowed to criticize them, which I thought was really interesting. So I'm going to criticize them instead. Um, and for those of you that have a relationship with Representative Drazen, I, this is something we need to get up the charts because we got shorted on our ARPA funds based off the Portland State populations. We got, we've got, been shorted on our state funds for years and years. Um, I attended their meeting last year in person. I was one of three people that attended in person to make sure that they understood our unique demographics and how we were growing as a city as compared to other cities in the region. Um, we've gotten stuff on the square footage of houses that are being built here. All of them are family size. I mean, there's a few apartments, but all of them are family-sized homes. So um, I think the legislature needs to at least be aware of that, how this is getting played. And this is happening to a lot of small communities that I first became in this, aware of this in King City in twenty eighteen because PSU's population number was lower than our number of registered voters. And they did not change the data based off of that. And it's just because it was a period of dramatic growth for King City, um, and their estimates weren't keeping in. So they will not show us their methodology. Um, so I can't show how, how they are airing. Um, and I think that these are, if, if the Oregon State Legislature is going to continue having them do these numbers, they need to be aware of how, in my mind, these numbers are being gamed. Um, so on that pleasant note, what's our next agenda? Again, so Representative Drazen's back in the legislature and she's um, my House Minority Leader. And she's, she's a smart lady and she's gonna be able to understand this really quickly. I know that some of you have closer relationships with her.
Well, and two, I think, uh, you know, the example here is proof in the purchase. We've run into these number issues numerous times. I know all you counselors have been a part of that. And we have vocalized that uh, this pleasure many times. So we are on board with your analysis of PSU and I think they really need to get it together. Um, or we'll have to find a new method of getting these numbers. And I'm not sure what that consists of, but uh, I think we could do a better job. Thank you. Uh, go ahead.
Alright, uh, the next question is in regard to Councilor-elect Michael Crossett. I know people have been concerned about him and how, what progress he's making after his terrible accident that happened. Um, and so Peter wanted to just address what the process is because we just, um, the election has been certified. He is, and he has been elected, um, one of three who were elected. And so um, there's a process that we would follow. Um, as it looks like he's not going to be able to assume his office, but I'll let Peter cover that.
Yes, so um, our, our charter is unique. Um, unlike many other cities, which is perfectly fine because that's what you get to do. Um, there's a requirement for somebody to be sworn in um, within a certain number of days of the first meeting. So although we have two counselors that, that think their term is over at the end of the year, um, in, in reality, their, their term continues until the seat's filled. Usu- usually that um, usually that seat is filled on the um, first meeting of the year. And usually um, people take their oath of office on that first meeting of the year. And um, so they have a, a certain number of days to take, take their oath of office. Um, I think it's nine, is it nine or ten? The ten days?
It's ten days after.
Ten days, ten days after the first meeting.
Yes.
So if, if that, and this is a, I mean, you obviously a tough situation, but if that, if that period runs, then at that point, someone could, you know, make a motion to declare the seat vacant. And you as a counselor, you as a council would, would appoint to that seat. And um, I don't know who would be continuing on in January. Um, because I'm not sure which, which seat he was, he was elected to. But yeah, technically, we would have the outgoing counselor continue in that role until, um, until the seat is filled.
Okay, Melanie, tell us, who, who, who the person is that would have been to that seat?
I, it's, um, you're, you're elected as a group, so I guess we draw straws between um, counselor. He is Counselor Strobel. One of them could continue. Um, or obviously we'd have a quorum if they weren't able to attend a meeting. Um, but this is in your charter and we do need to, um, we usually post uh, the vacancy for twenty-one days. So it's probably going to be into February before we would appoint a new person uh, to fill that spot. My hope was that um, Counselor-elect Crossett would make us extra speedy recovery and then be able to decide on his own whether he, this is something he has capacity to do or not. But it looks like he is gonna be exten- for an extended period of time in the hospital, uh, just working on his recovery. So um, like if, if he did want, if he did we want to resign ahead of, ahead of this, to letting the time run out, that could take place too. But um, otherwise, we would just do what Peter said. Yeah.
Given the circumstance and the fact that the individual that we're speaking about, Mr. Crossett, may not be awake to make that decision between now and then, even realistically. And when he does, his world is going to be drastically different. I would hate to ask him to burden himself with this for our community when he's already got so much on his plate. So I want to do whatever we can to support this man. He was elected by this community. It goes without saying that our hearts are broken for him and his family. Our support is with them, but uh, I don't want to burden him with this. So I'm, I like the idea of the appoint thing.
Letting the, letting the time run out and then do an appointment.
Yeah, I think that would be.
Uh, my question would be, are, would we be able to do a pro tem in place for either Counselor Hughes or Strobel staying on? If they wanted to leave?
Um, I mean, I, I think we would just, they would just not attend because we would have quorum. I mean, this is such a tragic situation and, and I know how much both of them care about the city Estacada. And, and hopefully, um, one of them would be willing to continue providing leadership here. But if, if they aren't, we can get, we can get through it. There's not a, there's not a pro tem process um, for, well.
Not for him, but for like, if for, if they were staying on at the, oh, can you go to the next slide, please? It does talk about that. If a temporary circumstance prevents a counselor from attending more than two consecutive regular council meetings or um, they are absent from the city for more than two consecutive regular meetings, then you may appoint a pro tem. But that seems like a very short time. If you wanted to do that, I think that we could go through that process. But it's a very short time.
So what's, what's, what complicates this is that the provisions don't come into effect until someone's an incumbent. So they're specifically mentioned as a co- incumbent, which is when their term starts. And so if, like if someone had been elected and was serving for, you know, a year and a half and then had to have surgery or something, and, and this predate Zoom, right? So I mean, this is when people had to show up. But let's say you're having like knee surgery or something where you just couldn't come in, then council could uh, appoint a pro tem. But based off of the prior provisions of the charter, the person who served in the seat serves in the seat until they're replaced by the newly elected person. And so in my mind, as I went through this, and there's some conflict in the charter, but my thought was that um, was that, you know, we didn't have a situation where someone was serving, had been sworn in and then had needed a break. We have someone that's not going to be sworn in and, and who, whose energy is really going to be, you know, having to be spent on recovery and all that. So um, I think like the wisest course of action is probably the a- after the period runs, the council's, the, the vacancy is declared. We notice it, we get, we get people. If, if one of the two of you can't attend, um, I get that and, and there's six people still, so we'll be fine.
So at the second meeting in January, the council could declare the vacancy and direct staff to post an opening. And um, then I guess it would be the second meeting in February. We bring back applicants for.
If it's in the interest, if, if it's what the family wants and there's a POA assigned, can the POA declare the vacant, the vacancy or the?
Yeah, but it, not until after the first meeting because that's when he's technically an incumbent. So that's when we could declare the vacancy.
Could the POA decline?
Decline, like not require that. Like you said that i- if he could speak for himself and say that he didn't want to be sworn in. Could the POA make that statement?
Yeah, I think so.
And then it would, and then it would speed.
At the first meeting and then we could.
I mean, when, when would he need to resign?
After he's scheduled to be able to serve.
So he can't resign ahead of time?
No.
Got it, okay. Understood.
Okay. Alright. Um, next slide. And I am, I had anticipated to provide a council goal end of the year update, but I will make this speedy. Um, so the um, council has five strategic priorities that they identified at their goal setting last January. Um, we'll be doing that again. I think it'll be uh, closer to the first weekend of February this coming year. But um, it's, it's, their, the strategies are to uh, develop and continue to promote what's best for Estacada and all the, all of the um, areas that provide for a quality of life. Next slide, please. So the first one is in infrastructure development, enhancing foundation for sustainable growth. And uh, you can go back through and read this. I'll, I will send this slide, uh, slide deck out to the council. And then anybody who is watching would also be able to, to read through these. Um, but I did want to point out that the highlighted ones are um, I meant with staff. We went over uh, twenty twenty-four and the work plan that we had coming out of the council goal setting. And um, one of the things that we did was identified the top uh, accomplishment that we were like, what was everybody most proud of for their department accomplishing? And so I highlighted each of those in yellow on here because there's a lot of work that got done. But um, it was really, I, it was really nice to hear um, what people were most proud of. So first thing was completion of the wastewater treatment plant by twenty twenty-six. And where we're at on that is we're working towards the ninety percent engineering plans. Those will be done by mid-January so that our CMGC can get those bid out. Um, we're mitigating the long lead time items. There's some really like a couple of years out long lead time. What's holding us up the most right now is federal approvals that we need. But we are working through that process. We're continuing to move forward uh, with all the preparation because we know that um, those will be approved. It's mostly checking boxes. They have to verify that we're doing the right thing. And that, so that's not, we're not concerned about not qualifying. We just have to go through the process. Um, which means that we will likely not be breaking ground until summer of twenty twenty-five instead of, we're planning to break ground right now. Um, so that pushes us out to not make that twenty twenty-six deadline, but we'll be into twenty twenty-seven uh, by the time we finish that up. But we are still pushing forward and the highlighted item there is qualifying for the DEQ program that included a one percent interest rate uh, versus, I think we were at two and a half prior to that. And so this will save us millions of dollars over the life of the loan. So that was um, a highlight there. We're making water system improvements. We completed the Water Master Plan. That was a, a big project to get through um, and a highlight. Uh, right now, we're working on upsizing the pipes at the water treatment plant, which will allow us to have more capacity. And we will be building the um, new high-level reservoir come spring. We were able to purchase the property for that. So a lot of things have been happening with water. Uh, essential infrastructure, a highlight was implementing the use of that screw press or that dehydrating machine that's at the wastewater treatment plant. And it significantly reduced the odor that we were experiencing. The plant has been running much better. We had no violations this past season, which usually that's when we struggle is um, towards the beginning, it's the shoulder seasons that, so like May, it's hard to meet requirements and then September again. But sometimes even in August, but we didn't have any violations. Completed Main Street, um, completed SDC update, paving Curran and Jeremy Lovelace was not anticipated, but because of good project management and getting some good bids when uh, Forest and Grove got paved, there was, there was extra money for us to do uh, um, so we did a change order to add on to that contract and was able to pave the uh, road in front of the fire station and out to the highway. Uh, which sig- seriously needed that improvement. Um, and then we're working on studying the new urban renewal area. Next slide. The second um, second point of the five is community engagement and education. And one of the highlights was hiring the outreach librarian, who we heard a little bit, bit about tonight, and getting the bookmobile on the road. Um, they go in town and surrounding town. Uh, but we've also, we have an AmeriCorps member who um, is our Outreach and Engagement Coordinator. She's doing a fantastic job. We've been putting um, uh, we've had a newspaper spot that we've been doing twice a month that we just started. So hopefully that'll be one more outreach in addition to website, social media. We'll have print also. Um, We'll have print also, um town hall events, we had two of those. Increasing awareness for our ongoing projects. Uh, a couple of the things that were new this year was using the graph. For how much water was getting used in the summer. Um, and then we did a actual kind of old school delivering door hangers. To neighborhoods about um announcing that the water audits that are available. Through Clackamas River Water Providers and the uh tiered water rates that'll begin on January one. Um, and then engaging the younger generation into the committees and. We have youth members added to the advisory committees and most of those positions are filled and then we also, our engagement. Outreach and Engagement Coordinator is working with Todos, Yotos and C R B in the schools and making other contacts to hopefully continue to. Get interest so that we backfill um with new students each year. The next slide is economic growth and business opportunities, fostering a thriving business environment. Um, you can see there's a very robust list of activities to accomplish here. Um. We did complete the market study. There are new property owners in downtown who are, are, and they're working on expanding the businesses, filling vacant buildings. Um, one building, the old Art Smith Building on Broadway got build, got filled after being vacant for nearly fifteen years. Um, did some visual improvements along highway, oops, not two forty four, that was a typo, two twenty four coming in. Um, and we have, we did half of it. We'll do another half, the other half um soon. Uh, we did an industrial campus summit. We're having the end of the year business connection outreach event. Just a lot of activity going on. I used to find myself involved. I just kind of meddled in everything and I cannot do that anymore because. We have so much going on. It's, it's phenomenal. Um, just a really great team that is um. Getting a lot of good work done. Promoting, promoting tourism for economic development. Uh, we have a contract for tourism development and there you'll see the new Christmas Tree USA promotions kind of circling around um. Creating a stra- a strategic economic development plan with an economic development commission and. Uh, the E D C has a full board. That was a highlight. And they are working, we've contracted uh with John Legarza to lead that Economic Development Commission. And um, so that, everything is moving forward with that. Next, we have balancing growth management, preserving the essence of Estacada. So managing growth with care, updating and adhering to the development codes and can, and considering residential and commercial development timing. Just a few of the highlights there. We added one F T E to the front office in order to have in-house H R staff, which. Um, was a recommendation of the auditor to pull um some peripheral duties off the finance director because. As we were growing, everybody just kind of kept taking on more uh tasks and more responsibilities and so we're trying to uh. Add staff to be able to spread that out again. And so I think that was a, a good um, a good choice to do. Completed a successful audit with no findings and expended our ARP A funds to meet the deadline. So um, those are kind of things that maybe people don't think about because you don't see them, but those are the things that are the foundation of running a, a strong. City and um, you know, managing this responsibility well, so. Um, and then successfully transitioning to a smaller community development department. We went from three. Uh, three planners, three city planners down to one, augmenting that with a contract. And then um brought on a permit tech that was trained in doing that work, which has been phenomenal. Um, but it was definitely a downsized from having a planning team to having hmm just one person who's a planner. Um, and so Alan has done great. I'll just give a shout out to you and I think it's going well and that was one of our highlights. Um, and the next slide is ensuring a safe and resilient committee, community. Um, the thriving communities program is going to be able to, uh, which we qualified for is going to. Assist us with evacuation planning and the county's already started on some of that. Um, but we'll be working on more of that and also school safety zones. Um, we've done some mutual aid agreements, uh debris management agreement. There's just been a lot of. Of groundwork that's laid and we'll be doing some more work with the council so that you know what to expect in the event something. Does happen. We haven't had something for a little while now, uh but that you can know what to expect and how, how we'll be responding. Um, and then just infrastructure safety for improvements. Um, preparing the, the update, the updated um water master plan will include the seismic upgrades to the water plant. And we're also starting engineering on a traffic circle at Eagle Creek Road instead of a, it's just a what, uh. One-way stop now on there. Um, but Eagle Creek Road and River Mill will have a circle, so we'd have continuous flow of traffic. And it would improve the function of that intersection. Uh, so that is all for that. Um, if you have questions, I'm happy to answer them, but I know we're running long on time here and. I will make sure to get these out to you so that you can um go over them if you want to in more detail. And then the next slide, I want to say a big thank you to the Downtown Estacada Commission for a fantastic tree lighting event. You cannot tell from that picture there, but there were so many people downtown. This room was full of people. Uh, meeting Santa Claus and getting their face painted and there was people up and down Broadway and horse drawn wagon rides and. Um, it was, they just did a phenomenal job. So thank you to the Downtown Estacada Commission and all the volunteers that helped them. And then just a couple of announcements, uh farewell to council, well, I think farewell to councillor Hughes and Strobel. Uh, we do appreciate the service. Four years is a, is a long time and it seems like it's just flown by. And then our first meeting in twenty twenty five will be on January thirteenth and we'll swear in our. Um, newly re-elected and elected officials. Um, but then also remember we will have a five P M meeting on December twenty third. So I think that is it. Is there any questions? That was a.
Any questions?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Alright, I will now close the Estacada City Council and open a public hearing. Um, do any members of the council wish to abstain or declare expertise contact?
Just want to declare, one of the, the subdivision applications come before the owner of that property has a. Business dealings with my employer that I don't financially benefit from, so I'm, I can remain objective, but just wanted to declare the relationship.
Good job. Okay, anybody else? Alright. Okay, the council will now hear from staff.
Alright, good evening all. I have two land use applications tonight. First, I will present on the zone change twenty twenty four. Dash zero two dash Z C, the, but the Estacada Community Center. Um, yeah, so just some background. So the applicant is city of Estacada and um. Yeah, so early in twenty twenty three, we received an application for a business license for a small computer repair shop. Um, in the Estacada Community Center. And at that time, staff noticed that the community center property is zoned R one and commercial uses in the R one require a conditional use approval. But we found no record that the community center had ever received conditional use approval to allow businesses to operate there. And so at the council meeting in um September twenty three, um. Planning staff recommended that the community center property be rezoned to downtown. To allow commercial uses, which have been operating there for decades. Um, at that time, the council voted unanimously to allow the city to initiate this zone change process that we're currently. Um, in the middle of. So the proposal is simply a comp plan map and zoning map amendment that would change the designation. And zoning from R one low density residential to downtown. Um, it's just one property, the current community center site and all city services, water, sewer and storm are already provided on site. So here is a map of the site. I think, sure, everyone is familiar with, with the location. Uh, it's just between the river and the highway and just southwest of, of city hall for those of you who are not familiar with it. And here is a. A snip of our comprehensive plan map. Um, so you can see that the, the community center is surrounded by properties that are zoned R three. That's the, the dark, or the orange. And it's also near properties zoned downtown to the north and then, and the east. And so instead of an uh, an R one, a low density rents residential outlier in the middle of this higher density mixed use area. That property would be zoned downtown. And so just looking at the zone change criteria from the code and from the state. Um, this application meets statewide planning goals. Specifically, goal nine economic development requires that local jurisdictions, cities provide enough land to realize economic growth. And development opportunities. Um, this propos- proposed zone change would clarify that the community center is an appropriate site. For use by local small businesses and facilitate the permitting of businesses on that property. Um, the application also meets transportation related criteria in our own development code. Um, the city engineer finds that the proposed zone change will not have a significant effect on the surrounding transportation system. And it also meets the criteria in the city code related to the transportation planning rule, the Oregon Highway Plan. And our concurrency chapter, E M C sixteen dot seventy four. Um, it also meets all applicable comprehensive plan goals. Um, specifically, it supports chapter seven on economic development. I'll talk a little bit about that chapter now. Um, there are two policies in the comprehensive plan. Um, under goal seven that support the zone change and general policy six states um. That is, it is a goal of the city to position Estacada as a supportive and responsive business environment. And also downtown goal number two is to establish a mix of office, service, retail, light manufacturing. Governmental uses as well as compatible residential uses. And so, as I mentioned before, this zone change would confirm that the community center is an appropriate site for use by local small businesses. Offices, service and retail businesses and would facilitate permitting those businesses there. And so the planning commission recommendation is approval. Um, they find that the proposal to change the zoning designation of that tax lot from R one to downtown. Can meet all applicable approval criteria and then therefore recommends approval. And so the next steps would be, are any members of the public would like to comment? Um, any members of council have any questions? Um, I can try to answer those and then. We'll need a motion to approve as presented, approve with changes or deny with findings. And I'll hand it back to you.
Okay, uh, just keep that screen up and we'll, we'll address it as soon as we come out. Alright, is there been any correspondence regarding this application?
No, there's none.
Alright, I will now read a statement about evidence presented at the hearing. An issue which may be the basis for appeal to Luba must be raised prior to the close of the record of the financial. Final he- eventuary hearing on the specific application. Such issues shall be raised with sufficient specificity so as to afford Luba and the part, parties an adequate opportunity. To respond to each issue. Failure of an issue to, to be raised. A failure to an issue to be raised at the hearing or in person or by letter or failure to provide sufficient specificity. To afford Luba and the partners an adequate opportunity to respond to the issue precludes an appeal to Luba on that issue. So we don't need the applicant up because you've already went over all things.
The city is the applicant, yeah.
Okay, um, council, does council have any questions or anything they'd like to bring up at this time?
And, and just clarifying, this is, this is. Basically confirming what's been going on there, just cleaning it up more than anything else.
Essentially, yes.
There's, we wouldn't anticipate any change in action down there.
No, not at all. It's already developed and, yeah, we just continue to operate as, as it has been. There would just be less confusion about licensing businesses that are. That are operating there.
Okay, like, was one hundred percent initiated by the city and wasn't requested by anyone to, for the city to initiate it?
That's correct.
And I'm assuming there's no uh speaker forums or anything on this, okay. Um, does staff have any additional stuff they'd like to add at the end of this?
I can't think of anything, no.
No, okay. We will now exit the. Public hearing procedure and we will go back into the city council. You see the um options you have up there. So can I get a motion?
A motion to approve as is, as presented by staff.
Okay, do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, let's do a roll call vote on that.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes, thank you very much for that. Okay, we will now go into a, our will close the city council and go into another public hearing. Um, I will now open the public hearing. Uh, let me see where I'm at. Subdivision twenty twenty four dash zero three dash S, uh, Amen Heights. And uh, do any of the members of council wish to abstain or declare expertise contact? No? Alright, I will hand it over to staff.
Alright, the second land use application of the night, uh, twenty twenty four dash zero three dash S, the Amen Heights subdivision with variances. Okay, the applicant is William Highlands and he is represented by the consultant Cecil Engineering. Both are in attendance tonight. And we'll be hearing from them a bit later. Um, the proposal is essentially a residential subdivision. There were two variances requested that were approved by planning commission at their last hearing. Last month. It's for, oh, it should say twelve single family det- detached lots. That is a typo, sorry about that. Uh, the site is a three point nine two acre site and it is zoned R two. And here's a topograph, a topographical map of the site outlined in blue there. Um, so just to give you an idea, there's quite a slope differential from the, from the southwest corner to the northeast corner. I believe it's about a hundred and thirty feet in elevation gain in that direction. Um, but yeah, just so you can kind of see. Um, the road to the, to the south is um Southeast Fourth. Um, and then to the, you know, the bottom left corner there is, is downtown, beginning of downtown. And zooming in a little closer, um, this graphic is from the recent property line adjustment that was approved by the city for this, for this area. Um, so the property line adjustment with, which is not yet final, but once it is finalized, it will create the single property. On which the twelve new lots will be created. And here's from the comprehensive plan map. Um, so you can see the area is a mix of R one, low density residential and R two, the medium density. So the, yeah, R two is the, is the. Brighter yellow there and yeah, as I said, we're just up the hill from downtown right there. So that's basically the area vicinity. Um, here is the preliminary plan, a bit hard to see. We'll see a lot more pictures of the plan. Um, from the applicant when they, they present after I'm finished. Um, but basically this is a layout of the twelve lots and the new street. Um, all lots are um, over at least ten thousand square feet. Um, there are three sections to the new street, so let me see if you can see my cursor here. So this, the bottom part here, this would be a public street. Built to the neighborhood local standard alternative. Um, here is, where's my cursor? Here's the hammerhead. That's the turnaround that was required by the fire department. And then this tiny bit here, this would be a private road. Um, but the whole road, whole street is called Southeast Panic's Place. Um, and then parcel one here from the property line adjustments. Um, this would be the residual lot created by the um property line adjustment and this would be developed at later time. Just provided this is a little bit more of a zoom in. I, I just, I just have kind of flipped it on its side. So you can see a little bit, a little bit better. Right. So I'll talk a little bit about the variance requests. Um, there were two, as I mentioned. Uh, the first one was about the width and design of the public section of Southeast Panic's Place. And so here is the neighborhood local street cross-section alternative design. And essentially the request was to build a sidewalk on only one side of the street, so they're asking. To eliminate the requirement that a sidewalk on the eastern part of the street be built. And the second variance request, um, it regarded the maximum slope that is allowed for streets in the city. And so that standard reads that grades shall not exceed six percent on arterials, ten percent on collector streets. Or twelve percent on other streets. And so this would be in other street, it's a local street. And so the request is to allow us a street grid on um Southeast Panic's Place to exceed the twelve percent maximum. And those variances were approved by planning commission. So per E M C sixteen one hundred, that's the chapter on variances. The planning commission. Is uh in, in charge of authorizing variances. Um, it was. Uh, they, they were both approved at the eleven twenty hearing and so council will decide tonight on the subdivision approval. Or proposal. Okay, so I'll just go over the street designs. So this is a cross section for the public street segment of Southeast Panic's Place. It's twenty seven feet curb to curb. You can see there's a sidewalk on the west side of the street. So yeah, this is looking north. No sidewalk on the east side and there's a retaining wall there. Yeah, I can just move on. If there's any, yeah, and i- if there are any questions about any of the, the details, the applicant is going to come up and speak afterwards and you can direct your questions to them. And here is a cross section of the hammerhead turnaround that is required by the police or the fire department. So yeah, it's designed to meet fire district needs. It's a twenty foot paved section. Five percent grade there and no parking allowed. And here is the section for the private road segment at the very north of the street. And that's a twenty foot paved width and no parking on either side of this, of that road. And so the improvements for Southeast Fourth, the north half street will, is, is required to be improved as part of this development. So that will be constructed to these half street improvement standards. We have a seventeen foot paved section, five foot sidewalk and there's a fourth foot landscape wall as well on the north. And so the planning commission recommendation is to, is to approve. So planning commission finds that the proposal to subdivide this tax lot to create twelve new residential lots can meet all applicable approval criteria and recommends approval. And there of course are many conditions of approval included here. I'm not going to go through all of them, but just some of the highlights, public improvements are provided. Streets and sidewalks will be built to modified but acceptable standards. A ten foot public, public utilities easement will be required around all the, all, all properties. Stormwater is managed. Water and sewer service will be extended from Southeast Fourth Ave and the fire code will be met. And so next steps, if anyone from the public would like to speak, we can hear from them. That includes the applicant. Council has any questions? Free to ask. And then we'll need a motion to approve as presented, approve with changes or deny with findings. And back to you.
All right, just to clarify, my comments earlier were about this applicant, not the previous one. I thought it was the whole session, just to give them that's approved. Okay, so this, it's gonna be for this one.
Yeah, not the previous.
Okay, great. All right, is there any correspondence regarding this application?
There were two letters that were included in the staff report as exhibits, but nothing since then.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, I will now read a statement about evidence presented at the hearing. An issue which may be the basis for an appeal to Luba must be raised prior to the close of the record at the final final eventuary hearing on the specific application. Such issues shall be raised with sufficient specificity so as to afford Luba and the parties an adequate opportunity to respond to each issue. Failure of an issue to be raised at the hearing or in person or by letter, failure to provide sufficient specificity to afford Luba and the parties an adequate opportunity to respond to the issue precludes an appeal to Luba on that issue. Okay, with the applicant, please step up to the mic. State your full name.
Good evening, Pat Cecil, Cecil Engineering, three seventy five Portland Avenue Gladstone. And I'm here tonight with Bill Highlands, the applicant. And he will come up later if you have questions for him that I can't answer. I just have a, a few slides that I want to go through in a brief presentation. With this first slide, we show the layout of the subdivision. It is for twelve lots. Is this my slideshow or is this? Okay. Okay. So we have a twelve lot subdivision. And the site was approved back in the mid two thousands as a twenty seven lot subdivision with many lots in the range of five thousand to fifty five hundred square feet. And it was the Bird's Nest two subdivision. And Bird's Nest one was up on top of the hill and Bird's Nest one was developed, but this site was never developed. Five thousand square foot lots is pretty challenging on a, on a site of this size, even though it's zoned for that. The, the road was centered in the site and pretty much ran straight up the hill. And by the time it got, it was at a fifteen percent grade all the way up to the top and at the top of the hill was in about a ten foot hole. And you know, the terrain is really the reason we feel like this subdivision, the site has never been built as a subdivision. Next slide, please. So the, the upper portion of the site is at elevation seven hundred and these lower corners of the site. The southeast corner, right in this area is about elevation six oh four and this elevation down this corner is about five sixty six. The average slope along this western property line is about fourteen point two percent and it's just a little over fifteen percent average slope along the eastern property line. So on average, about fifteen percent from, from top down to Fourth Avenue. We looked at several different development options for the site, including multifamily. But multifamily is pretty challenging on a site such as this because you need a big flat building area and a big flat parking area and that's difficult to do. So it was decided that single family was really a better fit than multifamily. And what Mr. Highlands envisioned was fewer larger lots and not the the five thousand square foot lots that are permitted by the R two zone. Next slide, please. So the big change from the earlier approved subdivision on this site was to take the road out of the middle of the site and move it to the upper portion of Fourth Avenue. These darker contours here and here and here, those are five foot elevation contours. And so moving the road from here to here was about a twenty foot elevation gain. So I got us a little farther up the hill. We were able to flatten out the road to some degree and sweeping it across the site creates a little more length and we were able to, to flatten it out too. So we looked at several different street alignments. This is the one that we ultimately chose. We did look at a private street. Being in this location rather than a public street. The, the private street allows the road to be built without sidewalks, which if you have a, a lot of grading to do, narrowing that street section is helpful. But the code only allows up to six lots on a private street. And so we would have had to ask for a variance request to double the number of lots allowed by code on a private road. And it seemed like a public street with a sidewalk on one side only to minimize the grading was less of a variance request than asking council to double to allow double the number of lots permitted by code on a, on a private road. So that's how we ended up with, with this layout. Next slide, please. So as Alan mentioned, there's kind of three components to the new road, Panic's Place. This is public portion of the roadway. This is a fire department approved turnaround and then this upper portion is a private road. The, the reason for the turnaround rather than the cul-de-sac is that there's about thirty feet of grade change across a cul-de-sac on this site from top to bottom. So a lot of grading on either end and this accomplishes a turnaround that the fire department will accept with far less grading. Next slide, please. These are our street profiles that were submitted in the application. Excellent. I just want to focus on the Panic's Place profile. It'll start at Fourth Avenue at zero percent. This area right here is fifteen percent. So from somewhere right in about here up to here. This area is between fifteen, this is like twelve point one percent. So so from this point, try to steady my hand here, from here up to here, this area is at twelve point one percent. So it's a tenth of a percent beyond what the code allows outright. This area is fifty, there's about fifty feet of fifteen percent roadway down there. So we're transitioning in the fifteen percent, we're holding fifteen percent for about fifty feet and then we're, we're transitioning down to twelve point one. At the very upper end of the road where it's private, it goes back to fifteen percent. In this area here where the turnaround is, the fire department requires five feet, or sorry, five percent maximum grade. So we are asking for a variance, is, we're not asking for the whole road to be built at fifteen percent. But because of that variance, every home that is accessing Panic's Place will be outfitted with fire sprinklers. That's the trade off that was made with the, the fire department. It would allow the, the grade to exceed twelve percent if fire sprinklers were used. So next slide, please. The big improvement for the site that the city and the neighbors will see will be the improvement to Fourth Avenue. There are two high priority safety improvements outlined in the TSP for this section of Fourth Avenue. One is sidewalk improvement and one is for road widening. Next slide, please. So this hatched area that you may be able to see here, this is, this is the area of the road that will be new. And it's basically goes from just about center line over. And this project will dedicate as much as twenty two feet of additional width of right of way in this area here where the arc is furthest out. And in total, it's about twenty one hundred square feet of additional right of way that's being dedicated to the city. And in that portion of the road, that's about the narrowest point of the existing roadway. It's currently about twenty two feet wide in that area, about twelve foot travel lanes in each direction. That's going to get bumped out to thirty four feet for the standard street section. So that'll be a big safety improvement to have that roadway widened through there. Next slide. This is the profile of Fourth Avenue. It ranges from just around ten percent down in this area. And at the upper end, just beyond Panic's Place intersection at the very upper end of the site. It's over twenty one percent grade currently on Fourth. So you know, we're, we're asking for a roadway to be over twelve percent grade. But there's many roads in the neighborhood that already exceed twelve percent and this one exceeds twenty percent at the upper end. So that is the end of my presentation. We feel that the project should be approved as was approved by the planning commission. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have and necessary, I can invite Bill Highlands up now or we can wait and come back later.
Do I still have any questions?
It's not a question more of just a concern because this area has been difficult to decide to, to develop. And there's a deep landslide susceptibility moderate and high and moderate for shallow. I'm concerned about all the trees being removed and how that makes it more susceptible to landslides. So I don't know if you can speak to that to ease my mind.
I'm not a geotechnical engineer, but we did have a geotechnical study done on the site. And I'll, I'll read you a section out of their report. It says, field reconnaissance of the proposed development area indicates that slope morphology is generally smooth and uniform, consistent with relatively stable slope conditions over the last ten thousand years. No evidence of active slope instability such as fresh scarp's hummocky and or irregular topography, et cetera, was observed on the subject site. And no geomorphic evidence of prior large scale land slope instability was observed during our reconnaissance. They did spot one spring on the site, which needs to be addressed. And in general, what they're saying is if we follow the recommendations of the report that there should be no geotechnical issues.
Can I answer your question?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody else have some questions they would like to ask?
And maybe you can't answer this, maybe Mr. Highland can answer this best, but I do live up Fourth actually up Oakview, right on the corner of First and Megan, and I know how steep that hill can get. Is this new road, is it going to be, I'm trying to picture what twelve percent is going to look like in my brain. Is that going to look similar to what Oakview is as you're coming down? I'm just thinking inclement weather, rain, ice, stuff like that, Fourth. Appreciate dawn. Getting the mag chloride on Fourth and up Oakview, but in the winter time, it, it is kind of a bit of a slip and slide. So I'm just, I'm just curious like what that looks like, if that's similar to what Oakview is or how steep that is. I'm just trying to.
So in yeah, in, in looking at Google Earth grades of the surrounding streets, it looks like Oakview is about twelve percent, maybe slightly more than twelve. Ginseng at the steepest area appears to be more like fifteen percent.
Okay.
So the steepest part of the street would be kind of like the steepest part of Ginseng and above that that one area where we're in fifteen percent, it's going to be more like Oakview.
That gives me visual, thank you.
Any other questions? I'm not seeing any. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there any speaker request forms? No, okay. Does the staff wish to add anything before we close up?
I do not, thanks.
Okay, you want to put the options back up on the screen, please? Okay, I will now close the public hearing and reopen the city council. And you'll have the options up there. Can I get a motion on the floor? I move to approve with conditions as presented by staff. Okay, great. I'm going to get a second?
I'll second.
Okay, first and second, let's do roll call on this, please.
Yes.
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 Yes, thank you very much for that. Okay, we will now continue on to council business. And the first thing on council business code discussion EMC chapters sixteen point seven six off street parking requirements.
That's it. So you'll remember from last council meeting, we talked about the parking requirements, the code, the code amendments for that. I've drafted some, or I've been drafting some code amendment language. And in the discussion section of that staff report, I kind of outlined what that's looking like.
It's page two sixty five.
Okay, page two sixty five of the packet. And so I can just quickly read that section if you, if you don't mind. So specifically, staff proposes to amend EMC sixteen seventy six to include a provision that would allow business license applicants to request a modification to an off-street parking standard for review and action by the planning commission. Such requests would require applicants to address a number of criteria including the expected parking demand and available supply for existing and proposed uses on the subject site. Opportunities for shared parking with other uses in the vicinity. Existing public and on-street parking in the vicinity. Transportation options existing or planned near the site and any other factors relevant to the request. Transportation options existing or planned near the site and any other factors relevant to the request. Also approved parking modifications would be subject to annual staff review. At the time of business license renewal to ensure that such modifications do not create problems. Parking modifications determined to be problematic would be subject to revocation. So in a nutshell. That is what we are looking at as staff for drafting and we just wanted to get some direction from you. Are we in the right? This is.
Yeah, I think so, yeah. I think you've got it.
Okay. All right.
Anybody else?
I actually have one other question for direction. Um, there are a lot of different ways that we could. List the criteria for how planning commission determines. Whether or not to approve uh modification approval. And I'm wondering if. Council would. Prefer that we keep it simple in the code or if we get very detailed with the criteria.
I would, I would like to keep it as simple as possible, just to give the planning commission and the members of the planning commission as much flexibility as they need.
Okay.
To not deal with one-off situations where we keep having to rewrite the code because. We didn't think about this particular thing as, as my thought on it.
Okay.
Everybody in agreement on that?
Okay, thank you.
All right, uh. Next, I have a uh. A resolution. Twenty twenty four dash zero two three, a resolution of the Estacada City Council adopting system development charges for. Accessory dwelling units.
So we had had some conversations last meeting and we wanted to bring back some statistics. Um, in twenty twenty four, we've done. A hundred and fifty six total housing units, a hundred and one houses, seven ADUs and four day apartment units. The average square footage for the houses was um. Two thousand two hundred and six square feet. Um, the ADUs associated with those houses was. Seven hundred and seventy five square feet and that's because the. The max ADU size is thirty five percent of the um.
Or it's ninety, it's nine hundred square feet.
Yeah, it's, it's nine hundred square feet. So, so what?
About thirty five percent.
So what we're seeing is that of the. Total structure, it's. Like it's, well, it's of the, the main house then that the ADU is about thirty five percent of. Um, in addition to that, and then. For the average apartment unit square footage for twenty twenty four, it was nine hundred seventy one square feet, so. Um. A, a little bit larger than the ADUs, but not um. Not by, you know, a, a large amount. So I, we think that these ADUs are generally, you know, two bedroom units with the kitchen and, and a bathroom. Um, again, they're, they're limited to nine hundred square feet, which is closer to the. Average for apartments. Um, and in all the instances where we had ADUs, um, it was. It wasn't a house that then had a portion of it converted to an ADU. It was uh the same developers actually doing. Um, this is what they do. They do a, a single family house with a, than an ADU. Um, the other thing we looked at was uh duplexes. Um, which are also two units. The difference between. A duplex and an ADU is the duplex is a mirror image. So if, if one unit's eighteen hundred square feet, then the other unit's eighteen hundred square feet. We collect. Those SDCs. As each unit pays a full SDC. Um, so in, in kind of looking at. Looking at this and trying to figure out. How would apply to other? How we would apply it. The ADUs are larger than a studio, most studio and one bedroom apartments. Um. They're less than the average that we saw in twenty twenty four, though there've been other projects that had smaller. Apartments uh and there could be in the future. Um. And. From a legal risk perspective. I think what, what's giving me a little bit of pause is that if we have a house where. It's, it's a total of three thousand square feet and it's two units. And. We're charging it less than two SDCs. I, I think it will be hard to justify then if we have a duplex that's three, three thousand square feet where it's fifteen hundred on each side. Kind of. Wh- what's the, you know, what, what will be the justification? Um. In doing that, I think that if, to the extent that we want to find a justification for doing that, the justification would be that. Um. In the ADUs, you do have one side that's smaller than the other, so. Maybe you would have less. People living in it and maybe. You would have less use of. Water sewer, what have you. Um. But. I think where we, where I would have some concerns then is if, if someone was doing a project of studio apartments that are. Less, less than seven hundred seventy five square feet if, if they were then to come in and say, well, we want. You know, a, a studio, you're probably going to have less people than in a two-bedroom ADU. And so kind of what, what would our justification be for? Charging. If we start charging based on square footage or some other. Methodology. I mean, I, I would want to have some pretty strong evidence, you know, just to find that. Um, just because again, the, the way we looked at it traditionally is. Per housing unit. So I think from, from a legal risk perspective, um, there is, there is some legal risk associated with charging less of an SDC. It is something that other jurisdictions have done. Um, I think just recognizing that. They kind of want. Houses in. What traditionally would have been a single family neighborhood having. You know, a mother-in-law unit or, or some smaller unit. So there's, there's definitely some precedent in other jurisdictions for doing it and, you know, I think. That we could. You know, we can, if that's, that's how you want to proceed, like we can kind of come up with some findings and other things to, to justify it. I think I would be most comfortable with a SDC per housing unit. Um. And I think that's, that's the lowest group ri- uh, risk approach. Um, that, that, that's not necessarily going to encourage ADUs, though they're being built already. Uh, and then I, I think the, the other thing. Um, a- and it's really the duplex piece that gives me the most pause.
Yeah.
So um, a- and then the, the other piece is that. Um. We haven't been completely consistent in um. Through no fault of our own, that, that. Oregon updated their housing software and they didn't flag the fact that they weren't. Um, charging a permit on the second unit. So we found out when we had someone come in and say, hey, I had to pay a permit fee on both these units and you didn't. Charge, you only charged me one on this, you know, so I want a refund. It's kind of like, well, uh, actually, um. You know, uh, we had no idea we weren't charging a second because the state software didn't flag that. And, you know, in, in equally compelling uh argument would be. You should have paid the second one on that other, um, so you got that benefit. So what I um, what I have said to uh Melanie and Mads and everyone else's. I just want to be completely consistent and understand what. You know, what, what it is and just try to apply it as fairly across the board as we can. Um, o- otherwise we risk having kind of a selective enforcement type of thing if we're. Making one person pay for two and someone else pay for one. So. So it was through no fault of our own that there was that variance, but there was a variance and makes sense to clean it up now.
Questions from council?
So I'm of the opinion that it, it's a strain on the system no matter what. So. Most likely, there's going to be a new person in that side. Um, so my opinion is that I would like. It to be charged the same.
Okay. Any other head on, sir?
I think we're all on board with your recommendation, Peter. Smooth across the board. Okay.
So the way the code is written right now, we won't need to change anything because it is, it doesn't distinguish. Between an ADU or an attached EDU. EDU is equivalent dwelling unit. And so it's written that every EDU. Equivalent dwelling unit is charged a full SDC. So we don't need to adopt this resolution. Um, for every, to reduce that. Um, it would just. We just carry on how we are. Yes.
Okay. Great. Thank you for that.
Unless, uh, do we need a motion? We don't need it. There was like no motion because there's no action then, right? Unless somebody wanted to make a motion. Okay.
Okay, last on council business is resolutions twenty twenty four dash zero two four, a resolution of the city council. The city of Estacada detailing the reimbursement policy for a city council expenses.
So this is just that this was already allowed. We were clarifying to provide some parameters to give people certainty as far as. When, when they could seek. Uh, reimbursement and also to give staff some guidance for how to. Process it and it, it sounds like we're gonna have, have to do some lobbying this year. Down in Salem, so we want to make sure you guys are getting reimbursed for your mileage and, and there are two members that are, two councils are cycling off. That will be able to vote on this and then everyone else should recuse themselves.
I recuse myself.
Okay.
Can I? Go ahead. Um, I, I move to approve resolution twenty twenty four dash zero two four, a resolution of the s- of the city council. Of the city of Estacada detailing a reimbursement policy for city council expenses.
I second.
Okay, first and second. All those in favor?
I.
Done deal.
I recuse myself.
Recuse.
I recuse myself as well.
Recused.
Okay. So that's done. We are now at the next citizen and community group comment I have done in front of me is uh Benson. Okay. And is um the other one that I had? Oh, okay.
How's it going? I just want to make a quick comment about uh the cannabis dispensary. Uh, I do, I think the council should reconsider allowing a cannabis dispensary in, within the town. The cannabis is a part of the agriculture of the city. It's grown here, it's harvested here, it's manufactured already here. He brought up a lot of good points about centralizing it in the. Commercial district. It would just be, like you said, an offshoot of his business. And I don't think the council should be in the business of. Preventing a small business from growing and potentially creating more jobs. And. It seems like a win-win if it's able to centralize it in one location and if we're able to get more tax revenue from it and he's able to generate, generate more business income from it. It should be allowed because he's selling a legal product, it's legal in the state of Oregon, people can legally buy it. We shouldn't be in the business of impeding his business growth. Thank you.
Could I just explain this, that, because I, I don't think it was intentionally mischaracterized, but um. So that fifteen percent, the idea of that was, let's say you're a custom cabinet maker. You could have fifteen percent of your space so that people could come in and they could look at cabinets. And, you know, they could see what you can do, quality of your work, all of those things. It wasn't. The intent wasn't you would walk out with a set of cabinets that day. It was that. Kind of skilled tradespeople could demonstrate their work. Um, you know, the components of that might be built uh and then delivered and as, assembled onsite. Which is why it's just for retail, it's five percent and for wholesale, it's five. Which is the, the opposite of what you'd expect, but it's because. As we were looking at it, um. The idea was that we were going to have, you know, tradespeople. Be able to, to have a area to show their wares and show their goods, not that. You'd buy them and, and walk out with them that day. The wholesale component, that was so that, you know. Your contractor could, could, you could have a little area for the contractor to pick up the cabinets and, and take them off-site or, or what have you. So that's why there's that kind of counterintuitive language of fifteen percent for. Kind of retail and then five percent for, for wholesale. And again, the, the um. This is not a prohibited. Use in Estacada. It's just. It's just limited based off of zoning and that's really common under our um. Our zoning laws. And again, um, when we did this, our um. When we allowed the processing of cannabis in our industrial park. It was, we provided a lot more flexibility than some other jurisdictions. But the council at that point did not want. The traffic associated with retail. Going into those areas where we have people trying to. Um. They're trying to move, you know, they're trying to. Do their work and, and people trying to and, you know, we don't. It, the parking's really not set, the parking there's really not set up for retail. And so it was kind of a, which. Helps explain the parking requirements, which maybe. Could have been done a little bit better because as we found out, but um. Yeah, so that was kind of the, as we looked back at, at what was intended at that time, that was kind of the intent was. Um, around that retail and wholesale language.
Hmm, great. Thank you for that clarification.
If anybody wanted to look that up in the code, it's in um section, it's title sixteen. It's so it's sixteen point thirty nine point zero two five accessory uses in the. Uh, M one zone. And in case anybody's listening or wants to follow up on that later.
I would imagine it's probably going to be more expensive to do the improvements to the intersection than to buy and build a place elsewhere. But the new daily trips are going to be generated in that and uh causing those intersections to fail. By the time you have to put in a traffic light, probably be cheaper to buy a piece of land and improve it than. Than to put it in that, in that location.
Yeah, I mean, that would, that would probably um generate a substantial number of trip counts.
Yeah.
Just based off. How far away. Competing. Businesses are from here. So i- i- you have a lot of the national forest folks, I think. Um, generating trips.
Yeah.
Question though. On the flip side of that, would that benefit? Us as we're looking to outsource or try to attract, excuse me, outsourced is the wrong word there, but attract. Safeway or Fred Meyer or bigger vendors for groceries and other things like that. Does the additional. Vehicle traffic, does it help the city? With our, with what our goals are along that tense or along those parameters as well. I. I understand both sides of this night, and I do think because it was presented as a comment, this is something that we should look at further, like maybe on a scheduled. Time, so it's not eating into everybody's evening, but. I think that we should look at it from all aspects of this, like. What's the negative? Because there's definitely downside, right? We, we all hear complaints still from people that visit there saying it smells and it's terrible, but. Also, what's the positive side? The tax revenue, it's unarguable that it would generate revenue for the community. And then also with the vehicle numbers for things like Safeway and things like that as we're trying to grow and develop. I just think we should look at it more.
Okay.
Okay.
So I, I am also for re- revisiting the retail marijuana. Is just on a tax, uh, potential tax revenue. Um. I think that the potential tax revenue would, would be huge. Um, but. My concern about having it in the industrial area is public traffic along with commercial traffic. Um. Just my one day experience that we spoke about earlier, driving a forklift. Um, I couldn't imagine, you know, a for- forklift operator, you know, with, with. Um, a bunch of traffic coming in for a retail operation. I couldn't imagine a truck driver, you know, trying to. Maneuver through that industrial area with um. Public, you know, retail traffic coming through there. So um, that's my concern there is the, just the. A- additional traffic into the commercials, the commercial area. Um, but I am for revisiting the whole retail marijuana.
I would invite you all to come down Noble Drive outside the wholesale location or the, the production facilities. And just look at the forty cars parked on the street already. And just look at the forty cars parked on the street already. And then the business owners in that area, it's poorly managed. The odor's poorly managed there. The HVAC systems, I don't know if they're annually inspected by the city, but they should be. Because there's lots of complaints from people that are large employers and the, including one of the largest employers in the city that complains about it regularly to the city manager, asking what we're gonna do with the smell. And then look at the number of vehicles that are down there and then look at the anticipated number of trips. I don't know that that's gonna come up in a traffic study that's gonna help get a grocery store in here if that's your intent for it, but I would love to get more information about how that's gonna benefit a traffic study, having daily trips going into the industrial park. I think it's a horrible idea. Where I work down in the industrial area and have to smell it all day. And it's, our customers come in, they look at us, we're a professional business and it reeks of marijuana around them. Our customers don't wanna come down to our business. It's the first thing they smell when they get out of their car. And then cars lined up on both sides of the street because they don't have adequate parking already. I think there's not a worse idea in the world than opening up retail marijuana in our industrial park. Think it's a horrible idea. It was thought down the last time it came up and put it in the downtown zone. And just because they don't wanna make an investment in our community to build a building where it's allowed and open a business, if a gas station, a new gas station wants to come in, they're gonna have, they're not gonna be able to change the zoning. They're gonna have to build a gas station. If you wanna put a new marijuana business in town, there's places where it's allowed, build a building, buy the property and do it. I think it's a horrible idea to change the zoning. It already got revisited two years ago and I'm not interested in revisiting it all.
And I'm with you on that one. Um, so moving along. Uh, we are at, uh, unless I have anybody else online, do I have anybody? Oh, okay. Um, we are at mayor council reports and comments. So I will start off with you, Charity Shurbl.
Well, um, I had prepared a, um, a farewell speech for this evening, but, um, given the current circumstances, I know, um, Councilor Shurbl and I will be back on the twenty-third, so it's not technically farewell until the twenty-third. And then given the circumstances of Michael, uh, Crossit, um, will, will, maybe he'll be back or I'll be back, but with that said, I did prepare a speech in ca- in the event that this is my last meeting or the twenty-third will be my last meeting. Um, so as my time on city council comes to an end, I'm reflecting on a journey that has been both challenging and rewarding in ways I never expected. The first two years of my term were, were filled with difficulty, strife, and what seemed like an overall unwillingness for the council to get along. We were all pushing in different directions, struggling to find common ground. Set our own personal, we were unable to set our own personal issues aside and we were unable to work together for the betterment of our community. During that period, I learned the val- value of perseverance, patience, and the importance of listening to each other. In those early days, it often seemed like progress was slow, if not impossible. But over time, the council started to come together. We found new ways to communicate, to compromise and to build trust. The work we've done in the past couple of years, working as a united body stands in stark contrast to where we started. And I believe it's a testament to the strength of this community and the dedication of all of you in this room. It hasn't always been easy, but I first, but I've seen firsthand how a variety of perspectives around this table are not a hindrance, but a strength. As I end my term, I am confident that the council we have today is one that will continue to work together for the good of our community. Uh, I want to thank my fellow council, counselors and the mayor for their commitment to the work, even when it was hard. Uh, thank you, council, for being gracious with me when I sat in for the mayor and, uh, led a handful of meetings. I wanna thank our city manager, Melanie, for all the emails, phone calls and meetings that have kept us informed and up to speed on all things city-related. To city staff, for your patience and willingness to answer questions and emails. I wanna thank my husband, David, our son, Noah, and our daughter, Esther, for being supportive from day one. They never once complained when mom had to step away for her city business. But mostly I want to thank you, the residents of the city, for your support, your patience and your engagement. It has been an honor to serve you and I am proud of the progress we've made together. As I step away from this role, well, maybe, I look forward to seeing what the future holds for this city. The path ahead is not always easy, but with the incoming council, I am confident the city of Estacada is in good hands. Thank you.
I'll read mine as well too. Well, well said there. Thank you. Uh, it's been an honor to serve on Estacada City Council these past four years. Um, like Charity, I can't say enough about the makeup of this council. You guys have been a joy to work with and I'm confident that you will all serve the city well and I'll truly miss working with you. I'll also miss working with Melanie and her staff. She inherited and hired some excellent people who also serve this city well. And I'll truly miss collaborating with all of you. To the two thousand and five counselors, I wanna reiterate something that I had mentioned in our planning session just this past year. In John Steinbeck's nineteen sixty-two book, Travels with Charlie, he visited small towns across the country and there was one theme that kept coming up. People were concerned and frustrated with the growth of their small towns. Steinbeck pointed out a simple truth that stuck with me. As long as people are having babies, he said, there will be progress. This book was written in nineteen sixty-two and in twenty twenty-four, we're still having concerns that the folks did sixty-two years ago. People are having babies, people are moving to Estacada and our town is growing. Our job as counselors, our charge is not to fight growth. It's inevitable. But we have the very worthwhile opportunity to shape Estacada's growth and do our best to ensure that it holds the value of the people that call it home. And I do think that this council is one that can help do that as well. And to the people of Estacada, thank you for this opportunity. Uh, we have a lot of great opportunities ahead of us. We've got hard work ahead of us, but I do feel like our future is very bright here.
I wanna thank everyone for coming to the meeting. Thank you for the staff for preparing us. Thank you, Peter, for your legal advice. And, uh, just wanna send my condolences and my prayers out to the Licky family. Hope Joel and Riley are doing okay. Um, and also send out my regards and, uh, prayers to the Crossit family. I know I'm in communication with them, but they're struggling daily to get through the, the long haul ahead of them and Mike just continues to recover and just excited to see him come through this and and wake up, uh, eventually. And thank you, everyone, for coming.
Well, I, I can't say enough good things about Councilor Hughes and Shurbl. Um, they have, they have convincing arguments and reason. They bring us back to the center when we get off track. So it's going to be really hard to do this without you. I've been doing this for two years with, with you. Um, thank you, everybody, for coming and, uh, I will see you in two weeks, I guess.
Yeah, thanks for everybody for coming out tonight and, uh, a huge, huge thank you for your leadership for this community. Uh, to Paul and Charity, you guys have been an incredible example and I appreciate you guys helping keep me going and get me going as I stepped into this last year and then as I continue on, really recently elected. So thank you to those of you that voted for me. It will not be wasted. I promise to be a voice for you. You bring it to me, I will act on it. That's the point here is to get to action in this council right here. It's what we're about, is making decisions and we're greatly gonna miss the two of you. Um, I just wanna echo what Councilman McElroy said about to the families. They're suffering loss right now. There is a lot of them in this community. To the Lekeys, to the Nashes. I mean, there's a lot across it. There's a lot. And in this holiday season, I just wanna encourage everybody to have faith and to keep hope and to endure. I know it's hard. It's hard on a lot of people and there's just a lot going on and the atmosphere is heavy. But there's brighter days ahead of us to just continue and keep fighting. And I'll do it right beside you. I know that the members up here will do the same. So thank you to everybody.
Um, first off, I, my, my heart goes out to the Licky family. Um, you know, and, uh, I said a lot of stuff about the Crossit family last meeting. Um, I still feel the same. Um, so all sadness aside, uh, Councilor Hughes and Councilor Shurbl, um, I wanna thank you for being part of the best city council that I've been involved in. Um, I've been involved in what I would consider to be the worst city council um, that the city has had, but I just wanna thank you two for being part of the best city council that, um, I've been involved in and have seen up here. Um, I really appreciate your insights. I really appreciate your opinions. Um, I've said it before, I learn so much every meeting, um, just from the different questions that are being asked, you know, I know Mike contributes a lot to that, um, but you guys have to, um, I appreciate, you know, what you've done, what you've brought here and I appreciate your friendship. So thank you very much for all that you've done for the city. Um, and, uh, hopefully whichever one of you might have to stick around for a little while, it's not too strenuous for you. Uh, but thank you, guys, and thanks, thank you, everybody, for coming. Um, I also wanna, I know Mark already left, but I wanna reiterate thank you to, uh, Walker Disposal for the service that they have provided to the city of Estacada for decades. Um, and, uh, hopefully the, you know, we move forward without a hiccup. You know, going forward, but thank you all very much.
They've, they've pretty much covered everything. Uh, again, uh, the Licky family, Crossit family and the Nash. Um, all of you have suffered tremendously. I, like I said, I can't even imagine this holiday season um, with the people you've lost. But we are there for you and we love you. And we will always be the council that looks out for the people that we were elected by. Um, I will miss Paul and Charity. They have been tremendous assets to this community. I can't even begin to tell you what they've been involved in or how they got through it or what their families had to put up with or any of that. Um, they are just truly magnificent people who have took their time to be a part of this. Um, and staff and everybody out there, I wanna wish all of you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. So thank you.